I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All this meeting, West Burn City Council, order roll call please.
Crowner.
I'm here.
Raleigh.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Lee's.
Here.
West.
Here.
We need to perfect and approve the agenda under consent, agenda item number seven, we can strike that off of there.
Eight.
Number eight.
Eight, I'm sorry, eight.
Motion approved is amended.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
I'm here.
Raleigh. Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Lee's.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
I'm here.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion approved as presented.
Support.
Motion to, with support to approve consent agenda items one through eight, which is demands of regular city council meeting, payment to the Des Moines County Regional Waste Commission, payment to the City of Burlington, payment to Burlington Municipal Water Works, payment to Gray Goddard, Miller &amp; Taylor, approval payment to Ryan Schmidt Flooring, approval payment to Uniform Den, and approve the claims as presented in the amount of $206,392.42. And that breaks down to the general fund, $108,014.01. Road use, $6,679.08. Tax increment financing, $840.45. LMI set aside, $951. Public works building, $34,720. Water, $41,987.20. Beaverdale escrow, 1975. Westwood escrow, 1975. Woodman subdivision escrow, 1975. Sewer, $9,657.43. Risk management, self-insurance, $2,942.31. Flex account, $521.65. And the Fourth of July celebration, $20.04. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Motion carried. Go to committee reports and finance.
I don't have anything new, but I see we're gonna have a little presentation.
Yep. Anybody have anything for finance before we go to the presentation? Well, we got a presentation from Southeast Iowa Regional Airport Authority. Mary and Dennis are here.
Hello.
You guys gonna join her up there, Dennis, or?
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Hi, my name is Mary Beard. I'm the airport director of Southeast Iowa Regional Airport, and I'm just here tonight to provide our annual update. And I gave you a handout and basically just wanted to cover some of the highlights and some industry concerns, some things that have been going on at the airport in the last year. And then I've also attached a copy of our budget for fiscal year 1314, our five-year capital improvement plan, and then just a drawing of some property that we just need to probably just let you know what's going on with that property. So, first of all, just wanted to cover some of our industry concerns. As always, federal funding for airport improvement projects is of concern. We continue to watch that at Washington DC and make sure that we are still eligible for that funding. It did go from a 5% match to a 10% match, so all of our grants from here moving forward will be at a 10% match. Essential air service is still going strong. There's been some personnel changes in Washington DC, so we will continue to watch that program as we move forward. Something you may have heard about in the news would be a pilot shortage. We're seeing that across our industry. It's very expensive to become a pilot, so we don't have a lot of young people that are wanting to be part of that career path. General aviation and corporate flying continues to decline, however, that's across the US. I must say, in Burlington, it's still pretty amazing how many jets that we get, corporate jets, at the airport. Any given week, I suppose that's five to 10 corporate jets. They fly in for the morning, for the day, sometimes they spend the night, sometimes they don't. So, we are still seeing a pretty steady flow of corporate jets flying into Burlington.
I learned one thing about that, if I interrupt, Mary. We mentioned at, it was mentioned at a meeting a couple months ago that one of the Italian companies here in West Burlington flies directly into the Burlington Airport from Italy without, nonstop. So, it's pretty interesting to see that happen and kinda emphasize how important that is out there to the economic activity and the industry here in Burlington. You know, people don't know this is happening, you know.
That's amazing, 'cause how does it work with customs?
Well, I think they clear customs when they leave, yes.
As they leave? Huh.
Yeah, that was mentioned, I think, by Jet Air had mentioned that, 'cause they service the plane. So, kind of an unknown secret, I guess, out there, a lot of things that happen.
Somebody could fly back to Italy, too.
Yeah.
Could they just drop me on there? That'd be great.
I'm sure there was, there were passengers both ways, obviously.
I'd like to go ahead and move on to the budget for fiscal year. Our operating budget is attached, pretty standard to what we have normally had in the last three or four years. We did have about a 4% decrease due to a lot of things, staffing levels, just my ability to get a better handle on the expenses at the airport. And so, from experience, that's changed a little bit. We did have some unbudgeted expenditures for this fiscal year 1213, a 10% match for land acquisition, which cost us $33,000, which we had not planned on. And then, we will have some demolition costs that go along with that land acquisition, and that's about $15,000. So, we did have some unbudgeted expenses this year that we're trying to take care of. And you might notice on our budget, there is a surplus dollar amount there, so we're planning on using that surplus to pay off some of our debt that we have at the airport. And that certainly is just debt left over from airport improvement projects from several years ago. As far as upcoming projects, we do not have anything slated for fiscal year 1314. That's federal projects, so we will not be needing a 10% match for any type of federal projects. We do have a state project, we're going to redo some hangars, put up some new hangars, and that will be phased over the next two to four years, probably. And then, as far as our five-year capital improvement program, we have in 2015 an apron rehabilitation, 2016, we are planning on relocating the thresholds, and then 2018, extend runway 12. Those are in our five-year plan. We do have the, perhaps the opportunity to move some of those projects around, so that's a potential that we might be changing the plan there a little bit. I continue to work on tall structure zoning ordinance around the airports, and that affects Des Moines County, Burlington, and just a small portion of West Burlington. We have run into a snag with some homes, some structures, more so, structures being in the runway protection zone. It's become a big hot button with the FAA currently, probably in the last three to five years, so we need to identify those structures and take care of them. So, we talked about, and I did include, the Armory is a problem. It does now belong with the City of Burlington, they own that property. However, I'm not sure what will happen. The airport is definitely interested in having control of that piece of property, so that could be something that we will continue to work on in the future. Who ends up with that Armory building, I guess I do not know at this point in time. Some of our 2012 highlights, we had the first nighttime airshow. I thought that was a big success, was the two-day airshow. We had a great group of volunteers that put that together for us. We had a ribbon cutting for Jet Air's five-year anniversary. They are the fixed base operator, they take care of all the fuel operations, the charter, air ambulance, those types of things for the airport, so they've been here for five years. We completed a $1 million runway taxiway rehabilitation project, and then we purchased some land and did a title opinion update. We had 124 parcels on the airport that all had to be looked at and remapped, so that was completed last year as well. We replaced some hangar doors, and then we had a request from our fixed base operator for a larger aircraft storage space. We were able to help that situation just by raising the hangar door, the maintenance door, so they could fit a bigger aircraft or a bigger jet into that hangar. Air Choice One continues their two daily flights to St. Louis and Chicago O'Hare, and we were granted an extension, three-year extension on their contract, so we're pretty excited about that. They will have been here for a total of six years when this is done, so that really allows the airline time to be part of the community and have everyone know that they are here. The big thing that Air Choice One did was added interline ticketing and baggage agreements, so you can book online. I think we'll see a big change in people who are trying to get to Burlington. I think that that will be helpful. Prior to, they wanted to go from San Francisco to Burlington, we put that in on a search engine, and they wouldn't see any type of flight, so there's some bugs in that, and they continue to work on getting those bugs cleaned up, but I think that's been pretty successful for them. Calendar year employments increased by 10% over 2011, so we officially surpassed our 2006 employment numbers, which were at their lowest after we lost air service for that four or five months.
Good for you.
So, that is our update at the airport. Any questions?
What's relocate thresholds, Mary? What's that?
Relocate the threshold, okay. Currently, on runway 30, which is the east-west, it is a displaced, what we call displaced. Well, the FAA is this push to get everything out of the runway protection zone, they don't really like displaced threshold, so we will indeed relocate that threshold, and at the same time, what we would really like to do is extend the runway at the other end, runway 12, so that we are not losing any payment, any, we're not changing anything. So, that is a plan, that's something that I need to be discussing. When we do that, that will also help with the structures, that will also help remove some of those structures from the other end.
Right.
So, that's a pretty key piece if we can make that happen.
So, that extends it to the west end?
Yes.
And what does that do then on that end with the, with the height restriction?
Well, interestingly enough, we own, the airport owns that property to the highway, so we're okay there with our runway protection zone. And the height restriction, for West Burlington, there's just that little, small portion, but truthfully, by the time that trapezoid goes up and reaches West Burlington, your height's probably 50, 60 feet in the air.
There's no problem with West Burlington, basically.
Right.
I think it's actually above, I think it's actually above 70, which is what our ordinance says.
Oh, really? That's what your ordinance says?
Yeah, I think actually, our ordinance says we can't build higher than 70, and I think it's actually up in the 100-feet range by the time it gets to us, so that's why I had that conversation, that I don't think it matters to us, 'cause it's already above what our ordinance says.
Perfect.
So, Air Choice One receives monies from the federal government through essential air services?
That's correct.
I'm sure you've considered this, what happens if that goes away?
We talk about that in our plan, how would we adjust to that? We're always looking at the budget and thinking about that. That would be probably about a $50,000 annual loss of revenue to the airport, if that goes away for us.
Oh. On the budget we're looking at here, is that on here, and I just haven't had time to?
No, actually, part of it is. So, we would have, oh, I apologize, the PFCs, what, there's a line item, PFCs of $35,000. And what that is, passenger facility charge for every airline ticket that they sell, the airport gets about $4.39. Those dollars can only be used for airport improvement projects, so that's $35,000. And they also have rent, commercial activity fee, and that commercial air service fees. Both of those are related to Air Choice One. One thing that they've really done here in the last year, too, is they bought a lot of fuel from us, which has helped increase our fuel revenues.
I'm just, I'm wondering, just question since you're here, just doing the simple math on the employments there, it's about five passengers per flight on the average.
Mm-hmm.
Total budget, 170, that comes out to $22 per passenger on your budget. Any idea how that would compare with other airports? Just going by the number of passengers that you're telling us about here?
Okay.
Just doing simple math of the operating budget, spending $22 per passenger, I'm just wondering how that might compare, if you have any idea.
The other airports that I typically compare to, that would be similar to our size, Fort Dodge and Mason City, Dubuque, their passenger employments are all over, they're more at 12,000, 13,000, so they have a lot more employments. So, it's hard to, I guess, compare that.
Okay. I'm just worried that you're building a bigger and bigger white elephant that might one day be in real big trouble. Of course, the airport supports more than just the commercial service, you know, general aviation, as well as corporate aircraft. My first question was, can you survive without general aviation? Shane did mention with Air Choice One, Shane Storrs did mention here, oh, about a year or so ago, that he would like to develop enough business here, so that if that would go away, he would be able to support his flying operation without the federal funding. Who are you speaking of? Shane Storrs, the president of Air Choice One.
Air Choice One president.
He made that statement. Now, I don't know whether he can do that or not, but that's what he said. And he, they have added, what, Fort Smith, Arkansas, or who was that?
It is a community in Arkansas.
Yeah, I don't think it's Fort Smith.
That's not right.
It's one, but they have expanded their operation, and so they are, they are growing, okay, 'cause they were just in their infancies, really, a very small company, but we've been real happy with them, 'cause they're interested in our business, interested in growing, and that's what we hadn't had with previous airlines, but it would impact us, it would impact us, the airport, and the community, Dan, and we hope that never happens.
Me, too, yes.
I'm kinda a little interested in this pilot shortage, how to get, where's the closest place to learn how to fly, I guess?
You can learn how to fly at the Burlington Airport, Southeast Burlington Airport.
Taking up a new career, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I've always wanted to fly, I fly a lot.
But I think what happened there...
And I have, I have sat in a 707 in 1961, in the cockpit, all the way from Germany to here.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it was neat, it was neatest thing that ever happened, so, one of them, but no, where can you, I mean, this is a great profession to get into, and where can some of these high school kids be steered towards?
You can actually learn, get your private pilot license at Burlington, between $6,000 and $9,000 is probably the quote that I'm hearing right now. Southern Illinois University, they used to have an awesome aviation program. They stopped that about a year ago, so it's Dubuque. Dubuque is probably the closest one to us university that would do the four-year.
But Tom, do they still have theirs?
Tom has a mechanic program.
They also have a flight school, 'cause my son went to that, yeah, he didn't graduate as of yet, but money, grand amount of money, but...
Does Kirkwood have a two-year?
Indian Hill has a commercial pilot's license, two years, and a campus, a nice campus right on the airport in Tom.
I think one thing that caused the shortage, Hans, is that the commercial airlines are requiring, what is it, 1,500 hours of flying time? And it was, what?
1,200.
1,200, okay, so they have increased that. That's, that's where the wrinkles come in.
Anybody have any questions? Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thanks for letting us be here.
Thank you.
Appreciate the support.
Anything else for finance? Public streets?
I don't have anything, Randy probably does.
A couple things, middle school's getting real close to having all the building and foundation hauled away, they're hoping to have that completed tomorrow. They were wanting to be done today, but they had a breakdown with the grinder and didn't get that fixed till later this afternoon, so overall, that project's moving along pretty fast. We're ready for this, whatever storm we get, our trucks are sitting there waiting, just whenever it snows, we'll be able to go out and take care of that, so that's really the only two things that I have.
Okay. I got something that we received here last week, between council meetings, and it's an award of excellence that was presented to the City of West Burlington in recognition of outstanding design and construction on street improvements, Houston Van Wiss extensions, West Burlington, Iowa's best municipal street intersection, PCC paving project, 15,000 square yards, 2012. Very nice plaque that we received from their association. And then I also need to present a couple of certificates of merit. And the first one, Randy, goes to Randy, which is the certificate of merit presented to Randy Frye, public works director, City of West Burlington, in recognition of outstanding design and construction on the project, which has been rated best municipal street intersection, 15,000 square yards, PCC paving project completed in State of Iowa in 2012, street improvements, Houston and Van Wiss extension, West Burlington, also signed by Gordon Smith.
He's a busy man.
Congratulations. Guy's got new diplomas.
Can we have other communities come and look, and recharge them with just a small fee?
Yeah.
See how good we did?
I think Steve had something to do with this, probably, I think he nominated the thing.
Thanks, Steve.
Alrighty, public safety.
I don't have anything, but we got the sheets.
Well, we had our neighborhood watch meeting last night, up at the elementary school, went very well, I thought, and right now, our IT director is redesigning our website, and I'm gonna demonstrate something that he's going to do for the police department to both help, let me get rid of that, to both help generate, if a crime happens within the neighborhood, maybe generate some witnesses. You can kinda look in your neighborhood, or you can look and see what's going on in the past, I think, 60 days in West Burlington, is it?
That's 30 days there.
30 days of the default. Now, let me, this is not calls of service, this is incident reports, once the officer determines that a report needs to be made, 'cause there was a crime committed in that area. As you can see, there's several places over here, like 1,500 West Agency Road, where there's multiple crimes within that 30 days, so if we were to pull up Walmart here, it's going to pull you up a nice little list. And what this is, is once the command officer basically okays the report, which is usually done daily, it will give you a little narrative, the case number, and the shoplifter, and just a little synopsis of what was going on and what the charges were. Goes on, if you go on down to, say, it gives small, the only driving that it does give, it'll go to the area that was stopped, is only major driving crimes, like driving under suspension, usually where there's a report generated because somebody went to jail, it was an indictable crime, 'cause driving under revocation, driving on a bar, and some suspensions or a serious misdemeanor and above. You can come down here and search through this area. You can also, if we'll go up to the top here, you can go longer back if you're searching for something. You can give a date range and go back to, say, November 1st to today's date. Yeah, we'll just go back to the February 1st. Hit submit, and it'll update, as you can see, it picks up a little more area, so if you was to come down and look at, like restraining, if there was something that happened with restraining order, it just kinda like, if there was a crime that occurred within a neighborhood and a person was in there, it may generate somebody saying, "Oh, I did see something suspicious, that went on down there." Helps along that way. You can also, if you wanted to put in your house there, you can put in your address in here, and it'll put a PIN map, just like 122 Broadway, it shows where we're at. There is also settings, if you wanna filter out different crimes. Also added to, that hits to the state website, hits up the state, and I still need to talk to the state references, I have a call into them right now, but they, Bradley, they prefer this, correct?
Yeah.
Let's see, I always hate these.
Good luck.
Yeah.
L-E-I-R-A-T-I.
Did I get it?
No, you didn't get it.
Okay.
You have too many spaces.
L-E-I-R?
Yeah. Go back to access, you got access right, you forgot, you did get the period, I see that.
You have too many spaces.
And you agree, you read down, and you agree to it, like on the state website? And, as you can see, it will put listed sex offenders within the neighborhood. Click on it, and you can look at different areas within the city, just information. Instead of going to the state website, it just makes it available. We did not make that a default.
Yeah, 'cause you have to agree to those terms.
You have to agree to the terms on the state website, but it's a very small program, it doesn't need to be maintained. As soon as the officer generates the actual report, the command officer takes it from pending to either active, inactive, or whatever it is, it'll basically put up there, the crime that occurred.
And who will have access to this program?
Anybody.
Anybody will have access. This is all public information, and actually, this is less than what the public is entitled to.
Yeah, because we don't show sex offender, or not, sex crimes or anything like that.
No child.
So, if the press had called, this kinda also will give them a little thing, just in case our press releases or our public release doesn't get faxed out, and they see something in there that's interesting, they'll be able to pull up and see that, then contact us and say, "Hey, we didn't get that."
Is this linked now through your, through the...
Right now, this is linked to the active database, and Burlington has the same program, theirs is a little more intense, but they pay a monthly fee, and it's crime reports.
Dot com.
So, you can, basically Burlington has this same type of information, I don't believe they have the narrative involved.
How, how do you get to that? Where on our website is that link gonna be?
I will link it on the police department website there, as soon as I get you guys' approval to do so.
Thought originally you told me there wasn't gonna be addresses.
Addresses?
Yeah. You said there'd be little, originally, I think that's what you told me, there would be highlights, like the little boxes and stuff showing kind of an area of what went on? We didn't show an actual address originally.
Right, and then when we did, it looked like if we had multiple crimes, like, say, if we did have that, it would basically, we couldn't get all the information on unless we put an address on for multiple crimes, which is out for, it's open for the public and the public release information. Because you gotta remember, too, in criminal justice field, a very big deterrent to an arrest, because there will be no suspects on this, there'll be nothing else but arrest, and the biggest deterrent to repeat crime is also publication in the paper, that portion of it. There's some cities that put arrest blotter on the internet that you can go check. Right now, this is linked to the active database. And Burlington has the same program. Theirs is a little more intense, but they pay a monthly fee, and it's crime reports. So you can, basically Burlington has this same type of information. I don't believe they have the narrative involved.
How's, how do you get to that? Where, where on our website is that link going to be?
I will link it on the, the police department website there, as soon as I gain you guys' approval to do so.
I thought originally you told me there wasn't going to be addresses.
Addresses?
Yeah. You said there'd be little, originally, I think that's what you told me, there would be highlights, like the little boxes and stuff showing kind of an area of what went on? We didn't show an actual address originally.
Right, and then when we did, it looked like if we had multiple crimes, like, say, if we did have that, it would basically, we couldn't get all the information on unless we put an address on for multiple crimes. Which is out for, it's open for the public and the public release information, because you got to remember too, in criminal justice field, a very big deterrent to an arrest, because there will be no suspects on this. There'll be nothing else but arrest. And the biggest deterrent to repeat crime is also publication in the paper. The, that portion of it. There's some cities that put arrest blotter on the internet, that you can go check.
The feature you guys will be seeing in here shortly is, let's say you click on one of those, uh, there, there'll be a submit a tip, and it'll actually submit an anonymous tip to our police department emails. So that way, if somebody knows something about it, wants to submit an anonymous tip, they'll be able to do so from right there.
So I'm just basically interested in, um, what the council thinks. Is that too much information to put out there, or?
I think it's great.
I mean, it, it could, anything that could generate us helping solve a crime to somebody call is a plus. You know, that normally wouldn't think anything of it, but if they know that a crime occurred, and what the crime occurred down there, and it was reported to the police department, that may generate them to just give a call and give a tip. That could solve a crime. Well, that's all I have, if there's no more questions.
Brad, how many hours you put into this?
I've probably got about five days of coding on this, so.
What would that have cost us?
I'm not sure what Burlington pays for theirs.
I think it's more than five days of rats.
Got anything else?
Good job.
That's about all I have.
Mike?
Uh, on buildings, we're still in the process of finalizing the Klein Center. We still have some issues out there. Uh, tinder top siding windows being installed on the exterior. Derry Brothers HVAC uh, is being installed, outside glass is still going in, and the framework for it, and the rough-in plumbing has been completed. Uh, Ortho Rehab Building, electrical plumbing HVAC is going in, as well as the exterior walls, and some roofing components are being installed, and they're also starting on the sprinkler system, piping going into the, the new addition of the building. Uh, on the fireside, our only thermal imaging camera is in for repairs. When we had the, looking at the new thermal imagers that we're looking for next year's budget, and for some of our grants we're going after, um, when we brought ours out, we found a problem with it, so it is into the shop. We're waiting for, uh, a bid for repairs on it. Uh, we're still receiving applications for firefighters in our SAFER grant. Uh, we're getting to the point now that we're shuffling some money now to do some phys, more physicals, and, uh, it may get to the point that we're going to have to put a hold on everything, and put them on a list to hire when it gets closer to September first. It's just been unbelievable how many, uh, applications we've got, and we've still got three more pending after tonight. So our, our ranks, we could, we could actually, by this time next year, have our ranks completely full, which would be probably one of the first times they can say that. And the Explorer Post is full. We got our people for the Explorer Post. The kids are very active. Again, they come in our meeting nights, and their other meeting nights are, uh, tonight, they're up there in training tonight. And, um, everything's going good. That's all I got.
How many kids is up in the Explorer Post?
Seven.
Seven? Three.
Anything else for public safety?
No, I want to thank Brad back there in his little cubbyhole for all the work and time never he, he putting that program together. Awesome.
I got a note here that I got the other day from, uh, um, it's addressed to the Honorable Mayor Trowell, members of city council. I don't know if you got copies of this or not, but I, okay. Got the copies, uh, I wish to thank you for the recent training opportunity that you were able to provide us with by allowing us to use the former middle school. We were able to put in, into practice some of the theories and tactics that we teach in the classroom. In the twenty-six years I have been on the fire department, we have never had a building of this type to practice with. With the new members that we have added recently, this training has also allowed us to give them some hands-on experience that you usually do not have the opportunity to provide. Thank you for your cooperation. Yours in fire safety, Paul Barnett, Division Chief of Training.
Twenty-six years in service, and he's thanking us?
Did any other fire departments come and participate?
Uh, we invited everybody in Des Moines County, and Burlington did come in. They brought their, brought some crews in.
Anything else for public safety? Utilities?
I don't have anything.
I don't, no, I don't have anything tonight.
You have a water main break the other night?
Uh, be at Friday, in, uh, in the alley by Long Meadow Park. It didn't take them long to get it, get it fixed, and we had the alley open back up that night.
Thought I seen a truck down there or something. Sanitation.
Randy?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Anybody have anything for sanitation? Other staff reports. Kelly, you got anything? Leslie? Okay. Anyone wishing to address the council matters that we haven't discussed yet tonight? Oh, new business. I'm number one, is to consider payment Snyder and Associates for engineering services. An amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for the project phase of the public works facility.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? We did have a meeting today with, uh, uh, the, uh, design architect and, uh, mechanical and engineering people, and Alliant, some going through what could be bundled together for, uh, uh, savings on the, uh, for Alliant to come up with, and was in there for about two and a half hours. Pretty interesting. Anyway, roll call.
Lees?
Hi.
West?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Stewart?
Hi.
Motion carried. I'm number two, is to consider repairs to the play structure swimming pool in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? This would replace the netting on the, uh, smaller play structure that's in, uh, west end of the pool, and also would, uh, bring back some of the color on the slide.
That's going to be interesting to see how that works.
Yeah. Roll call.
West?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Stewart?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Carried. I'm number three, is to consider resolution to hire Ethan Gurst as a probationary firefighter.
So move.
That's Ethan right there.
Ethan Gurst, um, just kind of getting started with everything, um, near the community, moving on, in on Ballard Street, hopefully here within the week. Looking forward to being a part of the fire department, serving the community like a lot of people, like Paul. It's pretty inspiring, twenty-six years. And I'm looking forward to serving.
Appreciate it.
Did you say you're on Ballard Street now?
Yeah, I will.
All right. I knew you were, the letter was New London, and I didn't know if he had moved in the community just yet. Okay.
Alrighty. Got a motion with support. Roll call.
I didn't hear the, who supported that one?
Oh, let's see.
Oh, did we? I'll see, Trace.
Trace made the motion.
Oh, I'll support.
I heard support somewhere. Roll call.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Stewart?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
West?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I'm number four, is to consider purchase personal protective gear with the two thousand eleven SAFER grand, uh, dollars. Amount of four thousand, four hundred and three dollars and sixty cents to outfit the new firefighters.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Stewart?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
West?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Motion carried. I'm number five, is to consider donation of Burlington Public Library Summer Reading Program. From their letter.
It's kind of a-
It's a form letter. I believe that they send out, in the past, we've donated swimming pool passes.
And as I understand it, from what you told me earlier, as they run out of passes and need more, we just?
I think we have, um-
They actually create their own form that they give out to people, and then they, so we don't actually have to get, make anything up here.
I'm all for it. I, my neighbor and English teacher at the high school, Vern Reed, was talking about the junior and high school students that participate in that program, and I had no idea. It's, it's quite a few kids. I don't know how many of them use those pool passes, and I know a lot of them probably get given out and able to go anywhere but the
We get quite a few back, but I imagine-
We track them?
Yeah, we do track.
Is it in the hundreds?
Um, I wouldn't say hundreds even. They probably give out that many, but I'm not sure we get that many back. I'd have to double check.
I would think it's a win-win for us, because if they're going to go to the pool for free, they're probably going to buy a pot. More exposure to the pools and I don't, I see that they don't ask anything in particular, but in lieu of this, of a cash donation, I, I would think this pool pass thing would be.
You gonna make that motion?
Um, yeah, because there's nothing suggested here. I guess that's what I would do, is make a motion to donate as, as few or as many pool passes as Debbie Woggenbach deems necessary.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
West?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Motion carried. Old business. Don't have anything? Anybody having old business? Anyone wishing to address the council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Support.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Being adjourned, we're going to have a-